Good evening and welcome to our March 10 regularly scheduled school board meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise if they are able to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, school board. Our first item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Anna, second by Jackie. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a seven zero vote, which brings us to the next item on our agenda, one of the most, our favorite portions of our agenda, recognition. First up, I would like to welcome Sarah Trudeau to the podium, coach of Valley Middle School of STEM's Future City team, to introduce us to the team that won second place in the 2025 Minnesota Future City competition.
I see you should have me too.
Awesome. Perfect.
All right. Is this good?
Mm-hmm.
Each year, students at Valley Middle School of STEM participate in the Future City competition. Future City is a project-based learning program where students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grades imagine, research, design, and build cities of the future. Keeping the engineering design process and project management front and center, students work in teams to ask and answer an authentic, real-world question: how can we make the world a better place? Students participating in Future City are challenged to imagine what it would be like to walk down the main street of a city at least 100 years in the future. This year, the theme for Future City was to design a floating city and provide two innovative examples of how their floating city works and keeps its citizens healthy and safe. This year, the team project Kelava placed second at our regional competition. This is a tremendous accomplishment, as 31 teams participated in total. Some of those teams come from schools where Future City is curricular, not co-curricular. They have it as a class. In our district, Future City is a co-curricular activity, making this an even larger feat. This team of eighth graders paved the way for our younger teams as well by demonstrating just what's possible when you set your mind to it. This team worked incredibly hard to accomplish their goals. They respected each other, planned in an efficient manner, and created an innovative, fascinating city. Their high scores on their essay, model, and presentation skyrocketed them to their second-place slot. I'm incredibly proud of these eighth-grade students and their parents, many of whom are here today, for their dedication and commitment to one of the best co-curricular offerings our district has. So congratulations to Finley Anderson, Charia Im, who is not here, Tamina Reynoso Lopez, Nate Wilcoxen, and Penny Winter.
That way we can shake your hand. Thank you for coming to me.
Congratulations.
Come on in. Go ahead, Sarah.
I love Future Cities. I love that program.
Amazing. All right, and we are not complete with recognition. Next, I'd like to welcome Kathryn Delich, assistant coach of Eastview High School Dance Team to the podium, to introduce us to the state champion Lightning Dance Team.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Balsani. My name is Kathryn Delich, and I am the assistant varsity coach of the dance team at Eastview High School. I'm honored to be here tonight to recognize the student athletes on our team who contributed to a successful year and worked together to uphold the legacy of the Lightning Dance Team. Led by 14 graduating seniors, the Lightning Dance Team earned the title of South Suburban Conference Championships in both High Kick and Jazz, the Section 1 AAA Champions in both High Kick and Jazz, and the Class AAA State Champions in Jazz, and took second place in Class AAA High Kick. The team also received the Team Academic All-State Award after maintaining an average team GPA of 3.65, and three of our seniors here tonight received an All-State Academic with GPAs over 3.85. More than the medals, awards, or accolades, they earned and received this year's team was one that learned lessons of being disciplined and maintaining poise under great pressure. We learned the depth of our grit, our relationships, and ultimately, the depth of our care and appreciation with each other and our sport. We are so proud to coach these young women, and I would like to introduce each of them to you now. And just a quick note that some of our dancers are not able to be here as they have rehearsals for their dance studio or are participating in separate after-school activities. Those who are here, please wave your hand when I call your name. Genevieve Anderson, Selena Barretto-Ramus, Riley Benz, Kelsey Berg, Ella Clover, Isabella Crawford, Adriana Crawford, Jasmine Duane, Cooper Dobbs Plan, Lorelei Dunphy, Sophia Fan, Esti Garcia, Claire Gertensen, Addison Hedrick, Ainsley Hickok, Lexie Jansen, Kimberly Gerard, Claire Corky, Arabella Cragness, Nicolette Kruger, Peyton Lecher, Kenzie Osberg, Aleah Redding, Ashlyn Rustad, Maya Schmidt, Ellie Uland, Holly Varner, Abigail Wannas, Gracie Wold, Ava Wood, and Cassie Zach. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, ladies, for coming. Congratulations.
What a legacy. You guys are blowing it out of the lot. Amazing. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming tonight. You guys have crossed the church. What a legacy, huh? Congratulations. Thank you so much for coming. Congratulations.
And my hands are cold. It's not good. My hands are so cold.
Next, I'd like to welcome Pete Roback, Rosemount High School principal, and Jason Elias, Eagan High School assistant principal, to the podium, to introduce us to our two District Excel winners.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Balsani. My name is Pete Roback, principal of Rosemount High School. It is my pleasure this evening to speak toward a special award for deserving, well-rounded high school students. The Excel Award, which stands for Excellence in Community, Education, and Leadership, is a unique recognition program designed exclusively for Minnesota high school juniors who are, one, active in school activities, two, leaders in their schools, and, three, who demonstrate a strong commitment to community service. This prestigious award is sponsored by the Minnesota State High School League. Each Excel student completed a rigorous application process, which included a student essay, records review of all student activities and leadership positions, and a nomination form from which school administrators sent to the Minnesota State High School League. The final Excel Award recipients were then selected by an independent panel of judges from schools throughout Minnesota. Ultimately, 36 award winners from across the state were chosen and will be recognized during halftime of the Class AAA Girls' Basketball State Championship game on Saturday, March 15. Two of these award winners are from District 196 schools. I am proud to recognize one of these award winners from Rosemount High School, Sarah Sarah is the daughter of Kristoff and Rachel Labaraire, and Kristoff is with us this evening. If you want to stand, sir. Thank you. Sarah has excelled in academics, athletics, and the arts at Rosemount High School. She currently has a 3.98 GPA while taking the full complement of advanced placement in college and the school's courses. Sarah was recognized this fall as a National Merit Scholar. Outside the classroom, Sarah is involved with National Honor Society, French National Honor Society, Triumph National Honor Society, and Student Council. Sarah is also active in clubs, where she is the co-president of the Future Medical Professionals Club, and an active participant in DECA, HOSA, and Champions Club. Sarah is the rare student who participated in both band and choir at Rosemount High School. While starting as a band student at RHS, Sarah then transitioned to choir, where she has been a concert choir member the past two years, and has even earned superior and excellent ratings while competing at the solo and ensemble contest. Sarah is also active in athletics at Rosemount High School, specifically varsity soccer and track and field, where she has been all-conference and a two-time state qualifier. And in her spare time, she has been consistently volunteering at Fairview Ridge's Hospital for the past year, and she also teaches faith formation at St. Thomas Beckett Church. There's not much she can't do. These are just some of the ways that make Sarah such a tremendous leader at RHS and in the community. In her Excel application, Sarah wrote that she values creating joy in other people's lives. She also shared, and I quote, "That by learning from adversity and challenges in our lives, we can all learn to become better people. And in doing so, we can become better leaders who have learned from past experiences and ultimately use newfound wisdom to lead effectively, positively, and most importantly, with empathy." So Sarah, congratulations on being selected as one of the 36th Excel Award recipients from across the state of Minnesota. I will now turn things over to my colleague, Mr. Jason Elias, athletic director at Eagan High School.
Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Balsani. I'm Jason Elias. I'm honored to be here tonight with Ankit Mukapadhyay. He is one of our incredible students to honor, the outstanding award of Excel. Mr. Roback did a great job explaining the award to you. Just want to let you know a little bit more about him. Here's a few things that he's been involved with at our school: tennis, band, debate, speech, youth in government, Spanish club, Math League, National Honor Society, Student Council, Link Leader, Eagan Foundation, and he serves on the 196th Legislative Council, just to name a few of his things. A quote that resonates with Ankit is from Gandhi, who once said, "I suppose leadership at one time meant muscles, but today it means getting along with people." Ankit is very good at getting along with people. One of our teachers said this about Ankit. "I've seen Ankit develop into one of the best male leaders and role models that I've ever taught over my past 29 years. Ankit is an outstanding leader because of his emphasis on positive moral decision-making, his exemplary character, his kindness, his intrinsic, driven drive for success. Many great students have entered the doors of Eagan High School, but only a handful are able to impact the way Ankit has made as a junior to our population. Eagan High School is looking forward to watching his contributions this year and next." Before I have Ankit walk through with Sarah, I just want to recognize his mom, Deb, who's with us tonight. I also want to thank school board members, Mr. Hanson, Dr. Rakowski, and Superintendent Balsani, for your continued support of athletics and fine arts programs. Our students are thriving with your support, and we thank you for that. Ankit, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations. Looking forward to seeing you later.
School, to the podium, to introduce us to one of our standing recognition items. We love it and hope to see more, too. Mia Battistone. Mia has been named a National Teacher of the Year by the American Association of Family and Consumer Sciences.
Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson, and Superintendent Balsani. We just want to extend from Eastview our congratulations to our Valley Middle School Future City folks, our Excel winners, and of course, our Lightning Dance Team, who was previously recognized. I'm pleased to be here again, third time since July, with Ms. Battistone. This is awesome for being named the National Teacher of the Year. This recognition is for her outstanding dedication to her students, her innovative teaching methods, and her commitment to advancing family and consumer sciences education. If you've ever had a chance to be in Mia's classroom, you will see her teaching with creativity and compassion with practical life skills woven into our curriculum. Her compassion for all learners is evident. She creates a nurturing environment where she believes every student can learn. She connects with students, differentiating her teaching to meet their unique learning needs. Her creative approach empowers her students for whatever is beyond the classroom. Mia's impact on our community, in the classroom, and through her mentorship of our family, career, and Community Leaders of America chapter make her an exceptional recipient for this well-deserved recognition. By the way, our FCCLA chapter at Eastview engages over 50 students, which makes it one of the largest chapters in the state. Superintendent Balsani knows Mia well, and he shared this about her. Mia is dedicated to her students and their interests and puts time and energy into finding meaningful career pathways. She has been a positive member of our community in her classroom and beyond. Her thriving FCCLA organization at Eastview provides leadership development and connects students with district and industry leaders. Mia gives back and is shaping the future through her work to develop the next generation of teachers, developing a connection with Normandale Community College to create a concurrent program for students to earn college credit in our Intro to Teacher Education program she teaches at Eastview, while also serving as a mentor to new teachers through the Career and Technical Education Teacher Induction Program, where she provides support to family and consumer sciences teachers across Minnesota. She has taken that cue from Chairperson Magnusson, who has always been a wonderful advocate and mentor for Mia through her teaching days, and she continues to do that to this day. We are doubly proud of Mia. She is a District 196 graduate out of Rosemount High School and an inaugural member of the Eastview High School faculty, and she also taught at Dakota Hills Middle School for two years prior to coming to Eastview. Mia will be honored at the annual conference in downtown Kansas City this June. Mia, this is a well-deserved honor. Congratulations for your remarkable achievements, and thank you for all you do to support our students. Mia Battistone.
Next, I will turn the meeting over to Superintendent Balsani for recognition of students and staff.
You, Chair Johnson, we've got a lot of success to recognize here tonight. We'll start with congratulations to Lucas Gerton of Rosemount High School on winning his fourth consecutive state title and the diving championship at the Class 2A Boys Swimming and Diving State Tournament earlier this month. Also, the Eagan High School Science Olympiad team took first place at the state competition on March 1 and will represent Minnesota at the national competition in May on the 23rd and 24th for the first time in team history. In addition, the team won its fourth consecutive conference and regional titles in varsity and junior varsity this year. The Dakota Hills Middle School Science Olympiad team took second place at the state competition and third place at the regional competition this year as well. Congratulations to our Dakota Hawks, Dakota United Hawks adapted floor hockey teams in this week's state tournaments. The PI team finished second in state in a hard-fought overtime game. Both Dakota Hawks CI and PI teams had successful seasons this year, qualifying for the state tournament. Congratulations also goes out to the Rosemount Girls Hockey Team, who finished fourth in state. Sophie Stramel earned the East Metro Girls Hockey Player of the Year, and Annalee Holzer was named to the Class AA All-Tournament Team. This was the 30th anniversary of the Minnesota State High School League's Girls Hockey Tournament, and the Apple Valley High School's 1995 team was recognized during the tournament as the first state championship in state history. Congratulations and good luck to Eastview High School Girls Basketball Team on qualifying for the Class 4A state tournament this week. They will play at 2:00 PM Wednesday, March 15 at Williams Arena. They edged out Rosemount High School in front of a sold-out crowd. Congratulations also to the District 196 high school wrestlers, who finished first, second, and third place at the boys' and girls' state wrestling tournaments earlier this month. We will invite them to be recognized at future board meetings. Two Eagan High School boys won state championships. Apple Valley Girls wrestler Cassandra Gonzalez won her third state wrestling championship. Coming into the tournament, Cassandra was undefeated. She pinned her way through the tournament this year and finished a season 25-0. Congratulations to two Eastview seniors, Joey Sams and Peyton Gagnon, on winning their first and second place in the Minnesota VFW Voices of Democracy Essay Competition. And later this evening, the board will be asked to approve resolutions designating this week as Cultural Family Advocates Employees Appreciation Week in District 196. Our CFAs serve as bridges between schools, students, and families. They foster academic and social growth and provide support for staff on how to meet the unique and unique needs of diverse students and families. At this time, I would like to invite any CFAs who are here, cultural family advocates, to stand and be recognized. I don't know if they were able to make it tonight, but we certainly appreciate them. Moving on, congratulations goes out to Highland Elementary Principal Chad Ryburn. The Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association has selected him as one of three finalists from Minnesota for the 2025 National Distinguished Principal Award. This prestigious honor, presented in partnership with the N. National Association for Elementary School Principals, NAESP, recognizes principals who demonstrate outstanding leadership and instruction, student achievement, and school culture. Congratulations also to Mandy Hill, who has been selected as principal of Greenleaf Elementary School beginning next year. Mandy has served as the assistant administrator at Diamond Path School since 2020 and will start her new position on July 1. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge the up to nine District 196 high school students here tonight for special communications. They represent four of our high schools. Many are leaders in their schools, and some serve on our district advisory councils as well. In recent years, there have been many calls for improving civics education so that students learn to be active and involve citizens in our democracy. As you will see tonight, our students are actively engaged as citizens in public policy work. And that ends my recognitions for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Balsani. That brings us to our special communication request portion of the agenda, and we have six speakers here tonight signed up and in attendance for our special communications portion. For special communications, each speaker is allotted up to four minutes to complete their remarks. We have a little timer at the podium that'll help. So after you come and introduce yourself, the timer will start, the light will turn green, the light will then turn amber when you have about 30 seconds of your time remaining to wrap up your comments, and it will turn red and make a little beep when you want to conclude your comments. As a reminder for special communication requests, special communication requests are a time for the board to listen. As such, the board generally does not respond to our special communication request speakers at the time, because we're listening and giving you the respect you need to come and speak to us. And lastly, just as a quick reminder, speakers are reminded not to bring up any sort of personnel concerns in their remarks, but there are other venues, and we can speak after that to do that. So first, in the special communication request, I would like to welcome Kyle Chen, our first speaker, to the podium. And Kyle, when you come on up, you can just start by introducing yourself and your connection to the district. We'll start it after you introduce yourself, give you a little extra time.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Balsani. My name is Kyle Chen. I'm a proud sophomore of Eagan High School. I love the place so much. And what we're here to do today is, we are, give me one moment, today, I come along with 27 students from back home and four teachers to ask of you guys to adopt the resolution of support provided at your desks, along with a policy memo and a statement from teacher. The resolution would show support from District 196 of Set File 1557 and House File 2003. These bills would propose a constitutional amendment which allows school districts to lower the voting age to 16 years old for school board elections. Today, at 4:42 PM, I joined 25,000 people across the state to apply to pre-register to vote. This shows that students across our state are ready, they are eager, and they are certainly riled up to vote, to engage, and to certainly be represented. This shows that this, the mission of lowering the voting age for school board elections, it's not a myth, it's not a hypothetical, and it is certainly not a fantasy. This is real. Our concerns are real, the concerns of our constituents are real, and the concerns of our students are real. We ask you to listen intently and listen with great pride. We have many teachers that could not appear today as they are certainly busy grading tests, but a statement from Karen Terhart, a teacher from Eagan High School, has a statement that I'd like to recite to you guys. Quote, "I have been teaching English Language Arts for 27 years, 25 of which have been at Eagan High School. I would like to begin by commending these young activists by presenting to you tonight, who are committed to persuading school board and district voters to extend voting rights to students ages 16 and up. As English Language Arts teacher, I have the unique opportunity to facilitate daily discussions about human condition, struggle, justice and injustice, and individual rights. In my classroom, students engage in topics that they might not have otherwise encountered in academic settings, except for perhaps in social study courses. I have witnessed how insightful my students are, how aware they are, and how adept they are understanding social and political issues. The world they live in has become much smaller in contrast to the world that I have lived in as a teenager. And as a result of their easy access information, whether it be through social media, news, alerts on the personal devices, or class topics and debates, they know what is going on. And what I find to be a recurring indignity for them is their lack of agency in the decisions that affect them most. Their position as young people is the perceptual and unfortunate rationale for why they do not get a say or vote, and education and safety is at stake. The ballot box, as we all know, is the most powerful tool to ensure our vision is carried out. When a local election will determine new seats to board, how money is allocated, or when another road is constructed to ensure that students walking to school will not suffer a mortally tragic accident, our students deserve to be agents in the outcome. And while they may have opportunities like they're seizing right now to bring their voices to ears in a board meeting, their voices deserve to be revered with a permanent, certain result. Thus, I endorse legislative change so that people ages 16 and 17 may vote in district elections, Karen Terhart, end quote." After me, you will hear from Pranay Deveru from Eastview High School, Aham Patel from Rosemount High School, Masood Hiri from Apple Valley High School, and Max Nguyen from Eagan High School, and Guyashi Badri from Eastview High School on this topic. They'll provide further comments about the specifics about this policy, the concerns that you guys might have, and how specifically it brings representation to our group of people. We thank you so much for your time and the allowance to speak at this board meeting today. We appreciate your communication, and we look forward to having further conversations with you and the superintendent with two-way dialogues to discuss this issue further. We thank you, and again, good evening.
Thanks, Kyle. Nicely done.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome Pranay Deveru to the podium. And Pranay, again, if you just want to start by introducing yourself and your connection to the district, what school you're at?
Hi, everyone. I'm Pranay Deveru, and I'm a current sophomore at Eastview High School in Apple Valley. I'm here in support of the resolution allowing 16- and 17-year-olds to vote in school board elections today, because by expressing your support for this resolution, you're expressing your support for the expansion of democracy to the people in this district who matter the most. This board approves the budget for our schools, shapes the quality of our education, and decides on the policies that our schools implement. However, the people who are sitting in the classrooms every day, the ones who are most affected by the decisions that this board makes, don't have a direct say in the decisions that we decide. This needs to change. Young people in this district are engaged and ready to participate in the democratic process. We're taking advanced courses, leading clubs, participating in extracurriculars, and are an engaged and enthusiastic part of our community. When we're allowed to vote in school board elections, we can engage in the policies that this school system pursues and have a say in the education that we receive. Critics like to point to three things to say that 16- and 17-year-olds shouldn't vote: we're not mature enough, we can't make independent decisions, and we don't really care. To begin with, research has shown that 16- and 17-year-olds can make decisions that are just as informed as adult voters, and as can be seen in the success of youth voter participation in countries like Austria. 16- and 17-year-olds are also considered to be mature enough to drive a car, and in some circumstances, can be tried as an adult in court. If they're mature enough in these circumstances, it only holds that they are mature enough to have a say in what this school board decides for the future of their education. As for making independent decisions, as in the ability to make decisions about who to vote for uninfluenced by any vote for uninfluenced by any other people, those concerns exist for any age group and any demographic, not just sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. Everyone who casts a vote is influenced by the people and pressures around them, and there is no evidence to suggest that teenagers and young people who are politically engaged in our democracy are unduly influenced by other people. And finally, the idea that we don't care. The fact that all six of us are here today, despite the fact that this is a meeting on a Monday night when we could otherwise be doing homework or hanging out with friends, shows that we actually care about our democracy and the decisions that this school board pursues. Everyone within this district's students body, student body cares about our education, and we want the ability to have a role in the decisions that are made about it. Considering all of this, I strongly urge this board to affirm today's resolution of support for allowing sixteen and seventeen-year-olds to vote in school board elections in Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our next speaker to the podium, Ahan Patel. And Ahan, similar, if you want to start by introducing yourself and connection to the district, and then we'll start your time.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Ahan, and Ahan Patel, and I'm a freshman at Rosemont High School. I'm honored to speak with everyone here, and I want to share why I believe the voting age should be lowered to sixteen and adopt SF 1557. This should happen because of the representation in schools would be improved and political awareness would be increased later in life. I'll also address a common argument, a common counterargument of maturity, and I'll show how this is often misunderstood. So first with representation in schools, it's a fact that more people over the age of sixteen than people over are there over the age of eighteen in high schools. These students are the ones who are affected by the district changes, and are many are well engaged in educational issues, and we know that our input can help shape the educational system as well. Therefore, if we were to lower the voting age to sixteen, there would be more voter representation within high schools, so more high schoolers would be able to direct where they want the future of the district ahead. The second thing that I want to bring up is how this change could lead to more interest in communities, which could last for a long period of time. By creating an early start to the voting in the school board, this would lead some young voters like me that could start a cycle and which could lead to more people voting in later elections, and this would provide more representation in the future. This is vital to school board and democracy, and this could sustain more voters of ages sixteen and seventeen now, but also more adult voters in the future, since the now sixteen and seventeen-year-olds will still have voice in the future, and now they would also be more likely to vote. There is also a common opposition to the resolution, and that remains to be the belief that sixteen-year-olds don't have the maturity. Voting depends on a concept called cold cognition, and that is logic and reasoning that is not emotional, which voting remains to be. According to the National Library of Medicine, this is fully formed by the age of fifteen so they can have the same skill as a fully grown adult. Since the actual standard of voting is same when comparing a sixteen-year-old and an adult, the representation would be equal as well. In conclusion, sixteen-year-olds should be able to vote for the school board. Peers remain informed about the educational system, and I believe that we have valuable opinions about elections. Since sixteen-year-olds and adults have the same cold cognition, our opinions will help with representation and awareness and community throughout our lives. I affirm the resolution, and I hope that many guests and distinguished members do too, and thank you for everybody's time.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our next speaker to the podium, Masood Hirsii. And my sincere apologies if I mispronounced your name, please correct me.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Masood Hirsii, and I am a surf sophomore at Apple Valley High School. I am truly grateful for the opportunity to speak with you today about an issue that directly that directly affects students like myself, and that is the voting age in school districts. Our schools are more than just places where we learn academic subjects. They shape our education, our experiences, and ultimately, our futures. The decisions made by this school boards and others like it influence everything we encounter, our learning environments, our extracurricular activities, and ultimately, our futures. Yet, the very students who spend years in these institutions, who experience the direct impact of these decisions, have no say in electing the leaders who make them. I stand before you today to advocate for a simple but powerful change, lowering the voting age for school boards to sixteen. At sixteen, we are entrusted with significant responsibilities in our communities. We can legally drive, work, pay taxes, and in many states, we are eligible to serve on juries. These actions require time, skills, and its level of maturity. If we can handle these responsibilities, why should we be denied the right to vote in the decisions that directly impact us in our own schools? It simply doesn't make sense. How can we be trusted to contribute to society in so many ways yet not have a voice when it comes to the decisions shaping our educational futures? Now, I understand that some may argue that sixteen-year-olds lack the maturity to make informed voting decisions. But let me remind everyone, maturity does not come automatically with age. Maturity comes from life experiences, from relationships, and from learning and growing through adversity. And as we as a generation have been forced to grow up quickly, we are exposed daysly daily to the realities of the world in ways that no other generation has experienced before. Thanks to technology, we are confronted with tragedies happening across the globe, whether it's the war in Ukraine, the ongoing conflict in Palestine, or even domestic issues like the fact that our president is a convicted felon. Now, I am not the first teen to speak about silencing of our voices, and I will not be the last. But I stand here not, but I stand here today not to ask for grand changes on the global scale. I am not here to ask to talk about saving the planet or ending world hunger. I'm here to talk to you about something much more personal, the right to have a say in the decisions that directly affect my life. I am here to ask you to give us some control over our own futures and our own education. Lowering the voting age to sixteen would not only allow us to have a say in our own futures, but it would also send a powerful message, that young people are capable, responsible, and worthy of being heard. It would only, it would affirm that our voices matter, and that we are not just the leaders tomorrow, tomorrow, but the active participants of today. We are the only, we are the people who inherit this world, and it's time we had a seat at the table when it comes to the decisions that shape it. So I ask you, members of the school board and other esteemed guests, to consider this. You have the power to make the, to make a difference in the lives of young people, to empower us and to give us a voice in the decisions that affect us most. Please let us have a say in the future of our education. Let us vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome Max Nguyen to the podium, our next speaker.
Good evening, Chairperson, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. Sorry if I fumbled that. My name is Max Nguyen, and I'm a junior currently at Egan High School. I'm here today to ask the board to support and adopt this resolution, which makes it possible for sixteen-year-old students to vote. As school board members, many of the decisions that you guys make directly affects us students. I have seen so many students around me who are incredibly involved in the community, local government, and contribute so much, and yet despite being the largest stakeholders, they are still not able to vote on school board elections, an election that probably affects their daily lives the most. As students, many of us want a voice and say in these policymaking decisions that would affect our daily, daily, day-to-day lives, no matter how small they are. And recently, I'm sure you guys know that the school board in Lakeville recently voted to ban a series of inclusivity posters. Inclusivity posters that were designed by the staff and students at the schools, which included slogans like "Everyone is Welcome" and "We are Stronger Together." Posters which emphasized diversity and friendship. And during that school board meeting, teachers and many students alike, including some of my personal friends, came to testify against the banning of these posters. But despite their frustrations, the school board still banned them. But those students didn't stop there. Even after this decision, many students still decided to protest. They wore T-shirts to school with these posters. But however, if these students had the ability to vote in the first place, and had the ability to vote for the school board members, the outcome could have been very different, but we would have never known. And the voices of, we would never have known the voices of what those students actually wanted for their schools, and they would have been more represented. And while some adults, I have argued, have met that students and teens like me lack the experience to properly engage and formally participate in local government and political discussions, I disagree. And especially in today's modern world, with the use of social media, easily accessible information, we are more involved, more involved and informed than ever. We have a direct stake in the policies and that shape our education and community, and our voices deserve to be heard. By supporting this resolution granting sixteen-year-old students the right to vote in school board elections, you would empower us to participate in decisions that affect our daily lives and encourage even more students who are already participating to join us. Please adopt this resolution and allow every student to be able to have their voices fairly heard and represented. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker tonight is Giasri Bodri. Again, I'm so sorry if I mispronounced your name, please correct me.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Giasri Bodri, and I will be speaking here today. I am a sophomore at Eastview High School. Today, we have heard the voices of many talented individuals, but I'd like to take a moment and show you the big picture, one where we decide whether to empower the very students most affected by school board policies or continue to exclude them from the very decisions that shape their education. This resolution does not impose mandates or force action upon unwilling districts. Instead, it provides a choice, allowing school boards the freedom to lower the voting age to sixteen for school board elections if they believe it benefits their community. The reasoning is clear. When students have a voice, schools become more representative, policies become more effective, and civic engagement grows. Research for Parliamentary Affairs and studies across Europe and South America prove that lowering voting age increases political awareness and lifelong voter participation. This is not a speculation, it's a data ba, it's a data-backed reality. As Columbia University says, "Voting relies on cold cognition, which is fully developed by age fifteen. In a voting booth, a sixteen-year-old processes information just as effectively as an adult," showing us that younger individuals are more than capable of making these decisions. This amendment is about fairness and representation. School boards make decisions about curriculum, policies, and funding that directly impact students. Yet, these students who know firsthand the success and failures of their education system are left without a say, and franchising them would ensure that their perspectives are heard and valued. This is not just about today's students, it's about strengthening our community's democracy. Giving sixteen and seventeen-year-olds the right to vote in a school board election fosters a habitat of participation that will be carried into adulthood, ensuring that the next wave of voters is not only engaged but deeply invested in the future of their communities. So today, I encourage you all to support this resolution, not out of obligation, but out of a commitment to fairness, civic engagement, and the belief that those affected by policies should have a say in shaping them. The time to act is now. Let's give our students a voice in their own education. And today, we'd like to take a moment to thank you and say how much we appreciate you for letting us have a voice here and speak on our opinions. Thank you.
Before we move on into our agenda, I just, I just wanted to say one thing real quick is that it is truly not easy coming to a school board meeting, walking up to that podium with a camera on you and a timer going, and advocating, right, and saying what's on your mind. I know that is a very difficult thing. So I just wanted to really commend our six students that came here tonight to coming here and having the courage to talk about this issue that's in, be civically minded to talk about this issue that's important to you. I think that that's just amazing. So, one sec. So I just, even though this is our formal, this is kind of our formal avenue to provide feedback to the board, so the board doesn't respond at school board meetings to special communication requests, but we do have listening sessions, which I'd encourage you to look at, that's more of a dialogue. Also, I am happy to stay here after the meeting and talk with anyone, I'm sure a couple other board members would as well. So, if you, again, I know it's Monday night and you could be doing homework, but we'll try to go quick through this part. Thank you. All right. I'm gonna move, bring us to our consent agenda, board members, we have twenty-two items on our consent agenda tonight. Those items include the minutes of the February tenth, twenty twenty-five regular school board meeting, the minutes of the February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five special school board meeting, gifts, quarterly gifts, quarterly advertising revenue, grants, treasure reports for January twenty twenty-five, schedule of investments for January twenty twenty-five, summary of claims for January twenty twenty-five, revenues of an expenditures report for January twenty twenty-five, personnel termination and nonrenewal of probationary teachers, additional services assignment for research assessment analytics coordinator, Cultural Family Advocates Employee Appreciation Week, March, March seventeenth to twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, joint powers agreement with Dakota County for funds to support emergency response, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six roof rehabilitation, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six carpet and other flooring replacement, designation of county right-of-access Rosemont Middle, retired iPad laptop sale requests for bids, cleaning supplies and chemicals, Eastview High School Activity Center addition and renovation, mass notification system agreement. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to remove tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Secoudin, is that correct? Okay, thank you for, thank you. Motion by Robin, seconded by Secoudin. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven-zero vote. That brings us to our reports item in the agenda, and I'd like to welcome Rachel Hughes to the podium to talk about our computer science strategic priorities, and Paul Olson.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Paul Olson, I'm in the coordinator in the Instruction and Achievement Department. I'm here to give you a report on the computer science pathway in District 196. This report is for information only and no action is needed. As with our other district work, our computer science education work connects to the strategic roadmap. Our CS work supports our district mission and vision to prepare students for lifelong success and engage students with academic opportunities. It supports our strategic priorities of achievement and resources by aligning our curriculum and providing needing, needed equipment. To start, I'd like to provide a little bit, bit of background information and data. When compared to other states, Minnesota has some growth in computer science. In two thousand nineteen, some data was gathered around a computer science education across the nation. Only twenty-four percent of our Minnesota high schools offered foundational computer science courses, which was fiftieth among all the states. Since then, we've had some growth. As you can see from the, you may be able to see from the, the chart above, it's thirty-six percent now, which has brought us all the way up to forty-eighth in the nation. The state of Minnesota has recognized the importance of computer science and has released a strategic plan with recommendations last year. Thankfully, District 196 is in a much better position with computer science education opportunities offered across our, our district high schools. If you think about the, about different industries, it would be very difficult to find a profession today which is, which isn't impacted by computer science. And this is reflected by the departments, the right of departments that have computer science in them. As you can see, mathematics, visual arts, family and consumer science, career development, they're all have touches with computer science. To name some specific examples of courses that students can, can take in our district, here are just a few that high, that are highlighted. Learners with different skills and interests, interests are supported, from beginning learners to those with much more advanced knowledge, as well as those with interest and connections to things like art. Beginners can get their start in Intro to Computers. New to coding or those beginning, with beginning knowledge of coding can advance their skills in computer programming. Those with advanced coding knowledge can continue their growth in AP Computer Science. Students can learn skills aligned to specific careers in networking and cybersecurity or software and game design. Students can express their creativity by creating art using imaging software and visual art. Those are just to name, to name a few. We have some current work in our district that aligns with our strategic priorities, and we look for improvement with the goal of increasing access and alignment across our district. At elementary, we look to increase access to hand- At elementary, we look to increase access to hands-on technology, supporting our beginning quivers. At middle school, our computer labs will be updated, and staff will have opportunities for professional learning. At the high school level, we look to support achievement by increasing access and alignment to course offerings. To help expand access to computer science education, the Minnesota Department of Education has offered grants. District One-Ninety-Six was awarded one to expand our current computer programming. Through the grant, we were able to support professional learning for our staff, as well as enhancing the experience for students and staff. Professional learning, supporting knowledge building, and best practices will be supported by the grant. The grant will also help us update our computers at middle schools, as well as attain additional equipment supporting foundational computer science skills like coding for elementary learners. We also have some future work to do. We're partnering with MDE for strategic planning with continued support for improvement for computer science education in One-Ninety-Six. We will assess where we are as a district, determine what are our strengths and what are our needs. We'll also do some visioning work to imagine and plan where we want to go with computer science in District One-Ninety-Six in the near future. Thank you for your time.
Right. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Jackie?
The information that we're gonna gather with MDE, is that gonna start this year?
Yes, that has started this year. Yep, and it will continue through the end of the school year into next year.
Okay, so we won't look for a report from that group until?
We'll have some initial data towards the end of the year, and then we'll have more comprehensive next year.
Okay, thank you.
Just gonna say, thank you for the work that you are doing looking into this. We're a little competitive in Minnesota, and nobody likes being forty-eighth place in the country. So, it's definitely an area where we need to focus, and when you think about the future, it's something that we need to be able to be responsive and give to our students. So, I think this is definitely a great priority and a habit that we're looking at and investing in. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, I would like to welcome Rachel Hughes and Stephanie Ochaki to the podium to go over our positive behavior intervention and support.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni, and members of the board. I'm Rachel Hughes, Director of Instruction and Achievement. I'm pleased to be here with the team, involved in exciting work happening with our school implementing positive behavior interventions and supports. With me is Stephanie Ochaki, Student Support Coordinator, who is leading this initiative of our Well-Being Strategic Priority district-wide.
Good evening. Thank you, Rachel. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Bolsoni. As Rachel said, my name is Stephanie Ochaki. I'm the Student Support Coordinator. Tonight, I'm here to share about positive behavior interventions and supports, what it is, and how it aligns with our district's strategic roadmap and MNMTSS. We'll have the opportunity to see positive behavior interventions and supports, or PBIS, implementation progress that's happening at two of our schools, understand future implementation, and our measures of progress. PBIS is not a packaged curriculum, intervention, or a manual. It is a prevention-oriented waves for our schools to build a positive culture by organizing evidence-based practices, improving our use of evidence-based practices, and maximizing academic and social behavior outcomes for our students. Our strategic priority of well-being focuses our continuous improvement to increase our capacities, skills, structures, and experiences in social, emotional well-being. Throughout our presentation this evening, you'll see and hear how PBIS, implementing this framework, supports our students and staff in this area. The impacts of PBIS implementation align well with our district's strategic priority of well-being because research shows that PBIS implementation improves achievement, attendance, emotional regulation, and school climate. It helps decrease disruptive behavior, bullying, and peer exclusion, and substance misuse. It also helps address and decrease educator stress and burnout. Endorsed by the Minnesota Department of Education, PBIS supports the success of all students. It is based on principles of applied behavior analysis and the prevention approach, along with the values of positive behavior support. The underlying theme is to teach behavioral expectations in the same way that we teach academic subjects. We know that effective school environments help students to be successful. Establishing a positive school culture includes setting up the school's social environment to intentionally reflect a shared vision of common values, beliefs, and behavior expectations. PBIS further helps organize a school to achieve its outcomes through understanding and using its data, providing a continuum of evidence-based practices, and supporting staff and students through systems in order to meet the self-identified and unique needs of each individual learning community. A core principle of PBIS is being culturally responsive. This includes holding high expectations for all students, using students' cultures and experiences to enhance their learning, and providing all students with access to effective instruction and adequate resources for learning. Schools must first know their students in order to respond to and meet the needs of the students in front of them, and PBIS helps our school teams do this. So PBIS is really about getting everyone to pull in the same direction. It's exciting to see how our school teams come together to engage in learning and action planning during their PBIS cohort participation, and to create and then implement the PBIS framework in a way that's both unique and personalized to their learning communities. With intentional reflection on their students and the school culture that they seek to create, PBIS training in the cohort is doing important work across our schools. Tonight, I am here with Charlie Kush, Assistant Administrator at Falcon Ridge Middle School, and Jen Zasky, Lead School Psychologist and School Psychologist at Thomas Lake Elementary, who will be sharing about what it's been like adopting the PBIS framework within their school communities. Participating in a PBIS training facilitated by MDE is an excellent way for our District One-Ninety-Six school teams to learn the core features of PBIS and engage in ongoing refinement and continuous improvement. The Minnesota Department of Education offers free training, external coaching, and resources to help schools implement PBIS. Getting started with PBIS begins with the staff. Initially, staff is provided with a Y-PBIS presentation. From there, the application process requires surveying staff about their interest and willingness to engage with PBIS. Schools with staff that demonstrate eighty percent or higher interest in becoming a PBIS school are accepted for training. Once accepted into a PBIS training cohort, the building level of team attends nine day-long in-services over the course of two years. During this training experience, teams are walked step by step through the processes of becoming a PBIS school. We understand it takes time to change and improve school culture. Training days include explicit evidence-based practices, along with a strong focus on team time for data review and site-specific action planning. Our partners at MDE are skilled in helping sites understand the PBIS framework as a starting point to build from. We start with existing social, emotional, and behavioral practices to support students at the school site. The training is purposeful in delivering the necessary information, as well as time to complete tasks that are required. Another benefit of being part of a PBIS training cohort includes access to ongoing professional development and booster trainings from MDE after the initial two years of training is complete, and even more after the school has reached full implementation. The opportunity to partner with MDE continues, and the learning never stops. Developing a strong foundation for PBIS includes a variety of core components, which are individualized to each school's unique needs and school culture. A strong PBIS leadership team, which draws from all members of the school community, helps steer the work. School teams with feedback from their larger staff develop shared language and explicit expectations across all school settings. These expectations are proactively and explicitly taught and revisited with students throughout the school year. Providing positive acknowledgement and reinforcement when students demonstrate these behavioral markers is a critical component that helps support consistent demonstration of expected behaviors. PBIS also emphasizes school-wide activities and celebrations of accomplishments to further foster a strong school committee. We strive to catch kids doing the right thing and to celebrate it. An additional core feature of PBIS is having a clear system for responding to unexpected or inappropriate behavior. With students, these incidents are approached with a teaching and problem-solving mindset. For staff, PBIS provides clarity about which behaviors are classroom or teacher-managed, and which would be supported by the administrative team. In all instances, the ultimate goal is to help repair and restore relationships while holding students to high behavioral expectations and standards. Later in this presentation, you will hear from one of our students about owning responsibility for actions, learning from mistakes, and fixing things when you do make a mistake.
We also collect data and track positives and problem areas so that we can continually improve. We have found that when everybody understands and has been explicitly taught expectations for behavior, the school is calmer, more supportive, and a better learning environment. When students feel safe and supported, they are more open to learning and willing to take risks to stretch from their comfort zone to their learning zone. Teaching positive behavior explicitly means we don't rely on kids magically knowing how to be respectful and responsible. We teach it. Having a strong PBIS structure requires a commitment to ongoing data review and reflection. PBS teams meet at least once each month, review and reflect upon behavior data, and, using this data, create action plans to celebrate positive behavior, reteach desirable behaviors, and, when required, marshal resources, people, and lessons accordingly in the attempt to prevent poor choices before they happen. To facilitate this, schools use their Big Five reports. That is, what behaviors are happening? Where are the behaviors happening? When are the behaviors happening? Who are the students demonstrating these behaviors? And how often are these behaviors occurring? Using these data sets allows us to be agile and responsive when supporting our students. Teams also collect data to measure fidelity and implementation. To what extent are the adults in the school applying the core features of PBIS? Finally, the PBIS Self-Assessment Survey helps elicit input from staff and students about PBIS implementation and provides valuable feedback for building PBIS teams. The goal is to inform and improve our approach in teaching positive behavior. Using and reflecting our building-level data aligns with our district's value of continuous improvement and lifelong learning as we strive to improve our systems and related processes related to teaching and managing behavioral expectations. Beyond the framework, you know that PBIS is working when you hear students and staff talk about behavior and school culture. In this video, we are featuring Thomas Lake Elementary, which is recognized by MDE as an exemplary school for PBIS. And for Falcon Ridge Middle School, go Falcons! One of our schools working with PBIS the longest in our district. Our school, or, excuse me, our goal is the positive behavior expectations will be taught in all District One-Ninety-Six schools, so students are clear about behavior expectations beginning in kindergarten and consistently growing with them the rest of their time in our schools. So without further ado, the video.
PBIS is Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. And really what that means is our framework or system for how we help kids know what's expected of them in terms of behavior, how we respond to behavior in a consistent, positive way, and then also how we support students in academic as well as their social growth. But really, here at Falcon Ridge, the PBIS is the Falcon Way.
Which is be respectful, be responsible, and be safe. These are like the three key actions that we need to do to like have a step forward in our education.
Well, it feels amazing. It feels nice to be part of this community space, and I really like that about Falcon. Responsibility means owning up to what you did. Like, if you didn't go do the best on something, you own up to it, and you like, you tell the truth, you try to fix it, you try your best to do better next time.
The activities teach you how to like work together and be respectful and safe, and just kind of follow the Falcon Way.
I think eighth grade is another step in that leadership path, where you're the oldest in the middle school, and you should be putting an example for the sixth graders and the seventh graders, and it shows that you're ready for high school. I'm just really excited for that, too.
I think it really helped our staff as a culture, too. I mean, the kids are here for three years, the shortest amount of time of any of their school experiences, but the staff stay from year to year, and we want to be able to have a consistent community amongst the staff where we have agreements about not only how we help kids learn academically, but the Falcon Way really helps staff also be consistent in really helping kids be good humans.
I belong, and I matter here at this school. There's like signs hanging up all over the walls, sort of like, you are loved, and I can tell that, that everyone's trying to make a nice community.
At the beginning of the year, we go to all the different big areas, like the classroom, hallways, outside at recess, the restroom, the cafeteria, all those different places, and we sit down and we actually talk with the kids. These are the ways that you show pride in this space. These are expectations for you, that they really are all those pieces of pride, that they are a positive person, they are able to show respect, they have that integrity, they can do hard things and show determination, and that they're really a unique and excellent person. We see them for who they are now and who they can be later.
This is what you're supposed to do right now. That's what I feel like leading, it feels like to me. I'm leading by doing the right things.
I feel like just showing integrity itself, it just feels so good, like it is its own reward, knowing that if you do the right thing, others will follow.
Everyone is a contributing factor to our school and our environment. Encouraging them that they have a role to play in their classroom, that they can help their classroom out in some kind of way, either by showing pride or by showing positive behavior. There is kind of an underlying common thread in all that.
Once you've lived with PBIS and incorporated the language like pride into your building, it just becomes a part of your values, it becomes a part of your everyday life, just a part of something that you do.
Are you done with the? Just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to interrupt you if you weren't done.
Can't follow the kids.
I know. It's a great ending, great ending, like a mic drop moment. But, are there any questions or comments on the presentation from the audience tonight? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Robin?
Thank you for the presentation. I thought it was very interesting, and I think I understood it correctly when you said that a school had to have eighty percent buy-in to have the training, and I just wondered if a school doesn't have eighty percent buy-in, is there some sort of follow-up to figure out why that might be?
Sure, that's a great question. I would just start by saying that as we've had schools express interest in engaging in the cohort, we haven't encountered that, but if we did, we would take the opportunity to help the leader explore that data with their teams, and of course, bringing alongside other information that they have to figure out what the path forward might be, because they certainly have other information from their staff, their community, and stakeholders, right, that could help them put that in context for their next steps.
Perfect, thank you. And then just one follow-up question. We had a presentation recently about BAR, and how it tracked high school students on a whole variety of markers, and I just wondered if this PBIS worked with BAR, like, or was it a parallel track?
Yeah, I'd say they work together. So BAR really is looking at the ninth grade, and PBIS is a framework throughout, ninth grade through twelfth grade, really looking at where maybe those areas are of, we want to put more resources at, whereas BAR is looking also at academics and other areas like that. So they definitely do come together.
Thank you.
Question, I had a similar question about BAR, so. Anna?
Sorry. Love this. So one of the things, I work with a lot of leaders, and one of the things that I talk about with leaders is what makes a great leader a great leader? And all the things that you are helping kids learn, accountability, vulnerability, taking risks so that they don't have to feel shame, and learning how to take accountability and sit in that moment of understanding what they did and how they can do better and move forward. Those are all things that make great leaders. And so as they are getting older, you're basically setting them up for future leadership. And so there's a lot of companies out there who are going to be really excited that you are developing such great leaders. So 10, 15 years, they're going to be set up for success. So thank you for that, really. They're going to be very well-regulated adults, very well-regulated middle schoolers and high schoolers, and that's fantastic. So thank you for that. I also was wondering if, there was a couple of things that you said that weren't in the slide, I would love to see your notes that I wasn't able to write down fast enough, that I didn't get to hear, so that would be great.
Catherine?
Thanks. I also really enjoyed learning about the program, but I wanted to bring it back to Robin's first question. Am I understanding it correctly that this is an opt-in program? So it's schools that say they want to be a part of this program, and then you do the assessment to see if 80% buy-in? Is that correct?
I think it's really assessing what, you know, what's the lift in all the initiatives that are happening at that building. So some elementary schools were ready to take it on in the midst of four new curriculum and some weren't. And so it's really meeting the needs of, stop talking about hands. It's really meeting the needs of that school to see, are we at capacity that we can really implement this alongside the staff? And like Stephanie said, we haven't had any resistance yet as we have been doing the implementation. And I think once we see that success, a lot of the things that are already happening at the schools are PBIS. It's just putting that into the framework.
Yeah, so that's great. And I'm just wondering about the schools that aren't necessarily stepping up right away, just that some of those might be the schools that could possibly benefit most from this kind of programming? And is there a plan for expansion and maybe working with some of those schools that might not be volunteering right away?
Yeah, there absolutely is. There's an implementation plan. And kind of like what Stephanie talked about is bringing them along. What's that data telling us? Where are the needs? What successes will you see from this program? Where does that already fit within what's already happening in your school? But like I said, we do have, as you know, lots of initiatives happening in our system, so it's also meeting kind of the staff where they're at so we can make sure the implementation is successful.
Great, thank you.
Jackie? Michael?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, these are great questions and we appreciate it. So we've had, we've actually filled our cohorts in the last few years. So part of it also is just capacity. There's a certain recommendation of the number of schools in each cohort. And I believe we're on schedule to have all 196 schools in either this year's, next year's, or the years after cohorts, and then all of our schools will have had the PBIS MDE training.
Great, thank you.
Jackie?
Thank you, that answered my question, was how many schools? And it is through the cohort that, and that's done by the MDE. I taught in a PBS school and watching this was really, you can remember those posters, there's posters in the bathroom, what does it look like to be a PBIS school? And what, how do we act in the bathroom? How do we act in the gym? How do we act in the hallway? How do we act in the lunchroom? And one of the, one of the kids said, well, they teach it. We teach it. We teach that we walk in the hallway. That's the Falcon Way. In my school, it was the Raider Way. But that's the Falcon Way. And I loved it with the eighth grader saying, well, we're eighth graders, we should be setting an example for the younger kids. And that's what it ends up to be, and that's why you have to have, and I think that the word intentional reflections really works well here because you've got a common language and everybody has to buy into that common language, that everybody knows, every teacher, every student, parents know what the common language is. So when you say, well, was that really the Falcon Way? Was that really the Raider Way? Kids know that, no, I wasn't acting appropriate and that's how we do this. So thank you so much for continuing to roll this out. In a couple more years, we'll have all of our schools done. Thomas Lake has done it for a long time. Yes, yes, congratulations. Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Thank you very much for the presentation. We are looking forward to seeing this getting rolled out district-wide. All right, next I'd like to welcome Shelley Munson to the podium to deliver a strategic priorities report on staff recruitment.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Wilson, I'm Shelley Munson, Director of Human Resources. And tonight I'm here to provide an update on our staff recruitment. This presentation's for informational purposes only, no action needed tonight. There you go. Of course, we know that staff are vital to the success of our students and supporting our mission of educating, developing, and inspiring our students for success. Providing staffing is one of our strategic priorities, of course, resources. We have about 400 and, or 4,300 staff overall in regular contracted assignments in our district and about 2,300 teachers. We have in our special education department about 550 licensed staff and about 475 paraprofessionals. So they make up about a quarter of our staff. And that's really our area of focus this year in staff recruitment as we go forward. Through last Friday, we had hired or, in some instances, rehired almost 1,000 staff so far this year in 2425. And about 250 also, those are co-curricular, casual, and other types of staff. So again, our priority really this year is focused on our special education as that tends to be our greatest need for staffing. First of all, I'm going to focus on a couple of areas where we focused on expanding our recruitment in our community for our support staff. So first was our first job fair in the district in August, kind of about the time that our families are thinking, starting to think back to school, we thought that would be a good time to recruit for several of our support staff positions and have at Eastview High School an in-person job fair. And it was a way to welcome in the community. We put a lot of advertising out on social media, through district newsletters, even lawn signs, trying to really encourage people just to come in and be able to visit with people. Sometimes you don't know if you want to work for the district when you don't have that opportunity to find out more about those jobs. And so we were able to do that and really bring in people who could, community members that could come in and feel comfortable coming in with family members or friends, and so that it wasn't quite so intimidating to be able to come in and talk to our different departments. We had about 126 individuals interested in learning about jobs and they brought, again, quite a few people along with them. Just give you a little, oops, went too far, sneak peek there. Again, we had different individuals from departments that could visit with people, they could interview right on the spot if they were interested, but it was no pressure, it was just giving information. We had interpreting services there so that we could welcome in people from all different kinds of backgrounds. And then we also had a computer lab set up and our HR staff was there and we could help people get applications started or completed, get those filed. And it was really helpful for us to see what are some of the obstacles people are facing as they're going through our application. So it helps us figure out what we need to streamline, what are things that can be stumbling blocks that are preventing maybe some of our community members from applying there. We also had a job fair then in the fall for our paraprofessionals. And that was often around conference time, we would get out posters and flyers and really encourage people as they were in and maybe waiting to talk with teachers to think about, you're in the schools, you're a community member, you want to come work for us. This was an opportunity, again, to really get out that word and invite them in to an event where they could learn more about being a paraprofessional in particular. That's just a really high area need for us and we really want to expand our outreach and get in all different types of community members to help that. And so this event was really focused on really highlighting what incredible, important support they provide for our students to really be able to be successful in school. And we did hire some paraprofessionals out of that and several substitutes as well. But what we saw is, again, bringing in family members and it was just really fun to be able to talk with them. We had lots of special ed staff in, and we had a panel. So we had kind of a presentation to talk about that, talk about pay benefits, all those good things. But also we had four experienced paraprofessionals that could give some insight at different levels about what a day in the life, what are the fun things, the challenging things, and just some Q and A and hang around afterwards so that people could find out about that. So these are things that we just found successful and will continue to do to try to bring in, again, our community members in a way that feels welcoming and maybe offers an opportunity to get interested in applying for the district. Even if it's not now, it's going to be down the road. The more they know about our system, the more that they could be involved in the schools in some way, shape, or form. They may end up volunteering instead of working, that's okay, too. Switching now to our teachers, we are now moving into, this time of year, our staffing for the 25, 26 school year. Right now, we have postings going up for next year, so we have, oh, just over 100 postings that we've had over the last couple of weeks. Some of those, of course, in elementary, many of those at our new elementary school, middle school, high school. And about 40% of those are in special ed, though. That, again, tends to be our biggest need. And we find that successful to really be reaching out early to especially new grads that might be coming out. So while we participate in some individual college fairs, we did one in late February that was more of mini, mini schools. And again, we were, had special education administrators with us so that we could do some pre-screening and then get them switched over if they seem like good candidates to talk in more detail with our administrators who can tell them about the job, get them encouraged, and get them applying. We had a job fair in person coming up, so that's been changed a little bit. Our school districts have been stepping up to host that as the university's kind of backed out. And this year, that will be held at Eden Prairie, and there's a group of other school districts that are helping, making that happen. And that's going to be on April 1st, an in-person job fair. And again, we encourage and get administrators there to be talking with candidates, we can do some onsite job interviews and that kind of thing. Another great way to get new educators is from our own employee base. So there's a couple of programs, you've probably heard a little bit about these before, I'm just going to touch on them tonight, our opportunities for employees to really develop our own internal talent. And so through the Grow Your Own program and also a Work and Learn program. I'll talk just briefly about those. The Grow Your Own program, which our Equity Inclusion Department secured grants and has been providing a lot of guidance and mentorship, is, allows our employees to get their bachelor's degree and right now kind of participating with five different local universities. They have cohorts, they give support, and we have 22 individuals in that program right now. So we're really excited about that. The University of St. Thomas is a partner for the Work and Learn program, and that's just really kind of an unconventional pathway where our paraprofessionals, who already have a bachelor's degree, can pursue a master's degree to get a special ed educator license. And so what's unique is it really allows that employee to keep working as a paraprofessional as they're getting the schooling and then also doing their student teaching. So that's really helpful as well. Some of the individuals in the program, as they get in a couple of years, actually can get that Tier Two license since they already have a bachelor's degree and can be teaching with some guidance of other experienced staff while they finish the program. We currently have about 12 individuals enrolled in that, and we have about 14 teachers who have already gone through that program. That program's been in existence a few more years than our Grow Your Own. So both of those are, continue to be successful programs for us. Just touching a little bit on the different ways, we've changed some outreach and communication and really have to give a shout-out to our talented staff in communications who have really been helpful for that. We've been doing a lot of online job boards, social media marketing. I'll touch a little bit in just a minute on our handshake campaigns, which is new for us, different flyers and postcards and website print ads. Again, I think I mentioned before, even lawn signs, before our job fairs, just getting that out. Upcoming here in early April, Rosemont Community has their expo in one of our buildings this year. And so, among other things, our district will be there as a presence to share information, will also be there to answer any questions and try to encourage community members, again, to come be part of their school district as an employee. So we'll be there as well. Just to touch base a little bit, handshake is, again, a job board utilized by most universities. It's something that we hadn't participated in before, and it's one of those things that sell longer-term outcome from that. You're really reaching out and building more awareness, maybe outside of those areas that already know. So we get a lot of our recruiting is because maybe people have been students here, they have family members, there's some sort of connection to come here and do their student teaching and be here. This is expanding that range to more universities, including some historically black universities, and really doing targeted campaigns that just tell more of our story. It's really getting that awareness, having some back and forth with students there even before they're getting ready to graduate. And we can kind of target down into what students, now it's up to them how much they want to communicate with us, they probably have more fun social media things they want to do than always talking with us in human resources. But that's something that, you know, we're starting to do and we're really, again, can direct people to some of these job fairs and things that we have as they come through. And then one other great resource we've had, our communications has put together a great video, is going to show you, for example, one on our paraprofessionals that just, we can have on our employment page, we had it running at our job fair. It gives people just that little glimpse into really what a difference you can make by working for the school district.
Paras, they make a real big difference in, you know, my life and my daughter's life. My daughter has special needs. She can navigate most of her days, but comprehension being a big roadblock in understanding. You know, the paras help break things down for my kid in classroom, which means that she's able to be included in the general ed. Inclusion is a huge thing, you know, without a para, that's really impossible. That's a huge difference, what the para makes.
Our paras definitely build a really good relationship with our students. Our students trust them. They just know exactly that moment to swoop in and add some additional support, or when to just let the student be independent. And I think that all comes back from the trust, the students trusting the paras because of the relationship that they have built.
They're getting literally that one-on-one connection point with someone who they trust. They are just such a wonderful relationship piece. The work that they do is truly invaluable. Often, they're helping our kiddos with academic piece of their work. They get the group learning that they need within the large group, and then they go off with our paras to continue the learning.
Even though they're not a teacher, they are. They're the ones who help me with my kids when I need an idea for how to help a certain friend, they're there and someone to bounce ideas off of. I could not function in my class or more my kids couldn't without our paras.
They do a lot more than just taking them around or, you know, taking care of them. Without them, I don't think I would be really peaceful at home, knowing that there is the additional support here, nurturing, caring, and teaching, providing that care and love, that's straight for my heart.
A little glimpse into the, into the life of a para, so that helps people to just kind of see what an important aspect of our students' education they really play. So with that, just kind of looking back to where we are this year, so, so far in 2425, we've hired 81 special ed licensed staff and about 15 that are rehires or retirees. We're really fortunate in that we do attract teachers from other school districts, too. And so we've seen that more and more over the last few years, and that's really, I think, a credit to all of our other staff and having a supportive environment to come to our district to work in. And I always encourage, as I'm talking to new grads or more experienced, I mean, there is an advantage in the size of our district, too, and how well we work together, is that we know sometimes enrollment may go up or down a little bit at some buildings, but there's other buildings. We're a large district, and so there's a lot of opportunity. We've hired 152 paraprofessionals and about 81 substitute paras. That's always a need for us as well, is to cover those substitute absences. So as mentioned before, we're starting our hiring process for next year. We intentionally post those special ed positions early and we, you know, even though there's fewer individuals coming out of our teacher prep programs across the state, we're all suffering with that. suffering with that. We're just really focused on trying to get the best candidates here. What's next on the horizon? Again, we're really still establishing some data collection systems to evaluate how we're doing as far as bringing individuals in. Onboarding kind of took a little bit of a more electronic, which is very efficient, right? We got some efficiencies during our COVID period, but doing more of that, bringing more of that back in person too, so that people have that connection, they know that mission. And many of our departments are working hard on how we really do that induction, particularly in those large numbers that come to us at the start of a school year. And then an exit interview, just having that built in our paperwork as people exit the system to start collecting that data and really seeing where do we maybe need to focus on some different areas to help retain, because that's going to be a huge piece too, is retaining those employees. And then really getting a guide for administrators, just for some more consistent and best practices for our hiring practices. So those are kind of our next, next projects here. And with that, it's just, you know, that we're going to actively strive to recruit, support and retain the staff that really reflect the diversity of our students today and to support those students in their, in our mission of educating our, those students. Any questions? I would be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ellie. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Leah.
Just real quick, do you have off the top of your head, and it's okay if you don't, but the percentage of right now, what we have filled for this school year as far as teachers and paras in particular? I'm curious.
For the 24, 25 school year? Yes, so most of those positions are filled. I would say that is our most challenging, probably for our special education, our positions that come open mid-year, because already people are in other school districts. So those tend to be the ones that we work closely with our special ed, as if people are going out on leaves and those different things that happen. But we've really had good success this year in hiring our paraprofessionals. They just tend to turn, sometimes turn over, right? They find other opportunities once they get into our schools. So we're just starting the hiring for next year, so we really haven't even, our administrators don't have the green light to hire yet. They're still doing a lot of the interviewing. And part of the process of staffing at this time of year is making sure all of our existing staff have places before we start hiring externally as well. So that's kind of all part of the puzzle we work through this time of year.
And part of why I was asking is just because I know that's actually quite a feat, especially in terms of paras and some of that, to get to 100% staffing. And so I'm glad to hear about the exit interviews and, you know, kind of pivoting to a focus on retention, because if we've gotten to 100% now, part of the magic is retention, right?
Yes.
So I don't know if you have any more you want to share about that?
No. You know, and I do think that's part of like with our substitute paraprofessionals. Again, if they like it and we like them, they get hired into regular positions. So that's our constant challenge, is having enough substitutes in our paraprofessional role. But yeah, retention is something, of course, with other departments. And we'll be talking more about that probably as we come back for our board report.
Excellent, thank you. Jackie.
Leah, you were kind of reading my mind. Shelley wasn't very patting her own back here, because they do do a lot of things with retention. And the district, the district teachers, the district teachers' union, all play a big role in making sure that people that are here today are comfortable and want to come back for next year. We have circles and support groups and all kinds of things for, for teachers to make sure that this feels like home and they want to stay. So you do a really good job with that. Making sure there's more things that, more things that you could be doing, but you do, the district does a really nice job with that.
And our special ed has really wrapped their arms and really given a lot of support, especially to new, to the field educators, because that, that is important, that support in those early years. And I think that's the reputation that we can get, is the supports that we provide help attract even from other districts. Not that we want to rob our neighbors here, but we do want to be a district of choice for staff.
And new teachers need that support. I mean, it always looks like it's a, it's a job that you have lots of people with you, but you go in and close your door and you're by yourself. So you need to have supports and, and people to go that a girl, that's the way we're doing it. And so congratulations, I think you do a phenomenal job that way.
Anna.
Sorry. So I love that you do exit interviews. Another question I had is, have you considered doing stay interviews? Sometimes with exit interviews, at that point, depending on why people leave, they can be angry and then they can trash the district. And, you know, that can be bad for our brand. And so sometimes stay interviews is just as effective. Because then you can fix the problem if there is a problem. And then you have a loyal, you know, loyal person, so.
So we don't have a uniform implementation of that right now, but I do know special ed did that particularly because wondering what was going on with our special ed teachers. And so our Director of Special Ed did a lot of those to get that input. And so that was really impactful and we plan to spread that across in other areas, because it just helps to know what's going on, what's working, what do we need to do to keep people.
Fantastic.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Thank you. I think this was great seeing. I loved seeing the job fairs and all the work that we're doing. And I particularly loved your presentation, seeing how you were helping possible recruits actually go through the job application with them and even say things about identifying pain points in the process. That's how you find that out, right? You're making, and by sitting there with those candidates and actually going through the application with them, you're like, wow, this does, this is kind of an odd thing, right? Can we fix that? That's making the candidate experience better and better and better. I just think that's excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, that brings us to our old business. And I would like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to go over a second reading of Policy 503, Student Cell Phone Policy.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am General Counsel Jill Coyle, and tonight's old business is Policy 503, Student Rights and Responsibilities. So there are several changes to the policy proposed for tonight for the Board's approval, most of which relate to the, to student possession of cell phones, specifically in Section 7 of the policy, new Section 7 of the policy. We went over those proposed changes in detail at your last school board meeting on February 10th, but I'll go ahead and cover a few key points again this evening for the audience and the Board's recollection. Again, I'll point out that Policy 503, as proposed, can be found in the agenda item that you have tonight. Look for that yellow highlighted language to see the new language and again, focus on Section 7 of the policy. So let's see, first of all, a reminder that a 2024 law passed by the Minnesota Legislature requires all Minnesota school districts to adopt a school, a policy on student use and possession of cell phones at school. We do have board-approved language. It exists in our student handbook, the Overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities. But the administration recommends that we go ahead and adopt language specifically into our policy in a more formal format, if you will. And that's what you have before you tonight, again, focusing on Section 7. I will also note that the Board's Policy Review Committee had an opportunity to review this language in committee earlier this year. I will also point out for you that the proposed language matches the current protocols found in all of our district schools. So specifically, students in all of our schools are required to have cell phones off and away during the instructional day. We do allow exceptions for high school students to have cell phones out during lunch and passing time, as long as they use those cell phones in a responsible manner. At other levels, it is permissible to have cell phones out before the beginning of the instructional day or at the end of the instructional day, but not during recess, not during lunch, not during passing time, and so forth. And the, the language of, of the policy matches those existing protocols. The policy has additional prohibitions, specifically absolute prohibition on using cell phones in bathrooms or locker rooms, and also a prohibition on use of cell phones to violate other district policies. So for example, think about student bullying or harassment policies where a student might be able to engage in bullying or harassment using a cellphone. Obviously, that would be an irresponsible use of a cellphone and could result in additional consequences. On the flip side, the proposed policy has certain exceptions. So there are permissible exceptions with administrator approval for a student that needs an accommodation due to a disability to use their cellphone. There's also an exception if a teacher specifically authorizes use of cell phones in a classroom for an instructional or curricular purpose. Other points to note, the policy includes a direction to schools to establish and communicate specific rules and protocols on student cellphone use consistent with the policy. And then finally, the policy covers consequences for violations, including prohibitions or provisions regarding student discipline, confiscation and search of cell phones, and loss of cellphone privileges at school. I will also note that if the 2025 Minnesota Legislature adopts additional laws with regard to student cellphone use in schools, we'll of course take a look at that. And if that requires future changes to the policy, we'll be bringing those back as well. So with that, it is a matter for your approval tonight, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we go into questions, this is an action item for the Board tonight. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Leah, seconded by Catherine. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, if you want to, come on, you can come up to the podium so everyone can hear you. Feel free to ask.
Hello, so I'm from Eagan High School. We have pause time after second period. I'm just curious, why is cellphone usage not permitted during pause time? I'm not here to argue against, I'm just curious why.
Why is it allowed? Why is it not permitted during pause time? So currently, the policy and the protocols are pretty specific about wanting to have it out and away to prevent all distractions, including during times like pause. As noted, there could be circumstances in which an individual teacher might be allowing of certain uses during pause time, if it was for an instructional or curricular sort of purpose. But as a general rule, we're looking to have more uniformity in terms of the prohibition.
Good question. I, I also would just add to that also. So last session, the Minnesota Legislature made it a requirement for all school districts to adopt a policy. And this is our first one. This is what we do. We had some things in our Student Rights and Responsibilities before, but this is an official policy. So I think that feedback is great if, if that's an item where maybe cell phones could be allowed or in the future. Those could be changes, we might look at changing the policy in the future, because this is the first time we've had an official policy on cell phones, so.
Gotcha. Certainly, I think first of all, thank you for the response. I have more information on that now, so thank you very much. Of course, it might be a bit helpful during pause for things such as, you know, trying to catch them on study guides, throwing quizzes on your phones, I know that happens a lot, or trying to communicate with their classmates about certain things, because I know during pause and lunch, those are similar, then you get on your phone, hop on Instagram, you start DMing people. So I think it might be beneficial. Of course, if there's things, things that don't agree with that, that's obviously of concern to us students, but I, I would just curious, so thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate the question. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? I think we asked all our questions at the first reading, so thank you very much. At this time, we have a motion to approve from Leah, seconded by Catherine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a six-zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no items under new business tonight. So that brings us to other action. I'd like to welcome Shelley Munson back to the podium to present our Employee Group Health Plan.
Again, good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. Again, I'm Shelley Munson, Director of Human Resources, and I bring before you tonight an exhibit on Employee Group Health Plan. The district has had a self-funded arrangement for Employee Health Plan with health partners, providing administrative services, network, and stop-loss coverages since July of 2012. State law requires us to request proposals for these fixed costs every two years, and this is the second year of an agreement with health partners, so that wasn't required this year. In the 13 years we've had a self-funded plan, our premium increases have averaged about 3.8% per year. However, the significant claims following the COVID pandemic kind of accelerated, and we've needed double-digit premium increases the last two years, counting this year and the year prior. And even with those, our current year, we're projecting that we will have spent down over the last two years, our plan reserve by about $3.7 million. So that's something that is a little concerning as we keep a reserve that covers in case, worst-case scenario for maximum claims, for run out of our costs, and also just to kind of mitigate in times like this, the increases, be able to use that. On the positive note, we are finally starting to see a moderation in the amount of claim increases and a reduction in the number of our very high-cost claimants that we had really seen in the past. We did have human resources staff, a shout out to Anita Toth in our department, recently conducted informational meetings with almost all of our bargaining groups, or got our bargaining group reps prepared to do that themselves, to educate employees about the health plans, raising costs, and what actions employees can take to help mitigate costs and overall savings for employees if they elect to enroll in our deductible plan. And sometimes that's just, you don't take the time to do the math and figure out all the nuances of a plan yourself. And so really found, again, doing that more in person was more helpful than, we always try to have print materials and videos and all kinds of zooms, but sometimes you just need that personal touch. The vast majority of our employee groups support discontinuing actually our co-pay plans. We have two plans, a co-pay plan, which is a higher premium, and then just a less out-of-pocket and a $1,000 deductible plan, where it's a lower premium. But if you use claims, there's a deductible. And the vast majority of our employees are willing to eliminate our co-pay plan and go to one plan. And that's going to help us then be able to focus and do more education and just kind of do some tweaks to plan that will help long-term. So that's our goal, long-term. This year, for the first time, we have more employees enrolled in our deductible plan than the co-pay plan, and we anticipate that trend to continue. So when we analyzed plan costs, the insurance committee found that the co-pay plan premiums haven't been sufficient to cover the claims cost for those that have been on the plan. So to address that imbalance and ensure fair cost distribution, the co-pay plan really requires a higher premium increase this year, and that's unusual for us. Usually, it's the same premium increase for both. The insurance committee recommended a premium rate increase of 15% for the deductible plan and 18% for our co-pay plan effective July 1 of 2025. The committee did not come to this recommendation lightly. This increase will continue though to protect the plan's fiscal integrity. And again, with that longer-term goal of getting down to one plan and being able to maybe be more nimble in making plan decisions going forward. The administration agrees with the recommendation and asks that you approve the exhibit I've just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. This is an action item for the Board tonight, so before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jackie is seconded by Anna. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Jackie.
The deductible plan will go away in?
So we have not, we have not reached resolution, most of our employee groups, but there's something called aggregate value, and it requires all of our employee groups to, to have that happen. So we were looking to have that happen a year from now. We wanted enough time that we could educate all employees and have them confident. Often with a deductible plan, you're also rolling, enrolling in a flexible savings plan or spending plan. That helps kind of budget for that. And it just takes a little more education. So we're hoping that by July 1 of next year, but again, we have, we have one more group to still get on board with us to be able to do that.
You think that the co-pay, well, we don't know what's going to happen to health prices anyway, so it's probably a wonder. If we're down to one and we've got everybody into one plan, do we look to think that the increases might not be as steep?
Yeah, so we're seeing those again start to decline a little bit. So our claims costs when you're self-funded are really, you know, there are all right. And the, the value of insurance is there for, you know, people that are having significant issues. And so that tends to be, you know, 20% use most of the claims. But we are seeing again, fewer high, high-cost claimants and getting onto one plan. The deductible plan has the advantage of a little bit of out-of-pocket, makes you think, hmm, maybe I could go to urgent care instead of going waiting at the, you know, emergency room. So it just gives a little bit more consumerism, and it just gives one plan, if we want to talk about how we might educate and/or modify it, it's less confusing for employees if we're all talking about the same thing. We're not kind of playing at odds against each other. So it's not a magic pill to make the plan costs go down, but we think that it will be helpful as we move forward.
Well, we can really thank you and the insurance committee, because this gets to be big, big stuff, because you're affecting people's lives and their health insurance. So thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve by Jackie, seconded by Anna. All those in favor of approval, say aye. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a six-zero vote. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us almost to the end of our agenda. I will turn the meeting over to Superintendent Bolsoni for superintendent updates.
Oh, thanks, Chair Johnson. I want to say good luck to the District 196 Boys Basketball Teams from both Egan and Apple Valley, who will be competing against each other in the sectional championship game on Thursday. District 196 athletes frequently meet each other in sectional championships, knocking one or the other out in route-to-state tournaments. So we wish them both luck on Thursday night. Graduation dates are set for late May this year and are posted on the district website. We want to encourage our seniors to finish strong as they head into the last trimester of their 196 career, and we look forward to celebrating with all of you. March is Music in Our Schools Month. Our high schools are hosting a full slate of music concerts. We invite community members to attend the following concerts, March 11th, 12th, and 18th at Rosemont High School, March 11th and 18th at Apple Valley High School, March 17th at Egan High School, and March 18th at Eastview High School. And lastly, District 196 has partnered with the Morris Leatherman Company, a research firm, to conduct a community survey to gauge public sentiment about the district. Surveyors will ask about the quality of education, financial management, strategic priorities, and educational technology. District residents contacted by phone are encouraged to participate in the survey. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any board members with items they'd like to share? All right, seeing none, that brings us finally to the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Anna, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a six-zero vote. We are adjourned.